The Bristol Board of Education. Maintaining a safe and secure learning environment for all students.
Consistently for the past quarter, three areas of the budget have exceeded budgeted amounts. They are general control, transportation, and special services. However, we have begun to see some movement as we approach year end, particularly in transportation and special services. The supply line in general control accounts for much of the overage, and that has been for the purchase of paper throughout the district. But we've begun to close out other outstanding purchase orders, and the overage in this budget character has been improved by approximately $20,000 over last month's report. You'll note in the transportation budget, it now shows a surplus of a little over 400,000, reflecting negotiated end-of-year amounts due to the closure of traditional school. Likewise, we see movement in special services overall budget due to the same reason, negotiation of our outplacement transportation providers. In total, our transport settlements have been in the range of 65% to 75% of the remaining contracted amount for the time period of March 13th through June 30th, and that's resulted in a savings of approximately 1.05 million. Special services is currently over budget by approximately 400,000, a considerable improvement over last month's 679,000 deficit. While staff and professional services account for a small portion of the deficit, it is the cost of private outplace tuitions that caused this area of the budget to be overbudgeted, and I think that's historically what it is. As we have approached the last quarter of fiscal year 20, and will now begin to reconcile purchase orders, we expect this number may improve slightly. Year-to-date, the district has collected approximately $2 million in rental, tuition, Medicaid, and excess cost. The State Department of Education issued an updated estimate of excess cost revenue. At this time, we estimate an additional 1.5 million traditionally received by the end of May. We've begun the process of forecasting our year-end balance, though due to the unprecedented climate and volatility caused by COVID, year-end projections are proving to be challenging. Presently, we do foresee a surplus amount that we are unable to accurately forecast at this early. Finance Department has been in close communication with the City Comptroller, and all have agreed that the surplus amount up to 1% of our budget will be set aside for the purpose of additional special services tuition in fiscal year 21. This is very good news, and we are most appreciative of this planning. There was lengthy discussion about, well, move to cafeteria. The April 30th snapshot of the food services budget shows a deficit amount of about 126,000, largely due to the absence of cash sales within schools as the primary reason. Several factors will impact this amount as we approach school end. For example, it reflects purchases that include frozen sandwich options that will last through the end of June, additional supplies for food distribution, and an additional labor differential for those working in the cafeteria distribution centers. We are eligible for FEMA reimbursement for these additional expenses, and we expect reimbursement of 70% to 75% of our expenses. Once received, we can apply this directly, and our snapshot will adjust accordingly. Good news is, as of May 12th, we have served a total of 58,712 breakfasts and lunches for a total of 117,424 meals to the greater Bristol community, and that's something we should all be very proud of. All right, and there was significant discussion about an error that happened in the payroll for some of the food services employees. I am happy to say that that issue is resolved, and the union and all affected employees are happy. Well, everybody's happy that it's worked out, so we're good. That concludes my report.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone have questions for Commissioner Pons? Okay, since we're done, Commissioner Pons, did you want to speak on communications this evening, since we just met, or would you be more comfortable next meeting? Commissioner Pons, we're having a hard time hearing you.
Slightly. Hear me now?
Yes, that's perfect.
Okay. So, tonight, on the 3rd, at 6 o'clock, we had our meeting, and we were able to hear an overview of the parent surveys that the school district conducted, looking for answers on how parents perceived their children's response to the shutdown, and how the parents actually felt about communication regarding the school closure and distance learning. The majority of the responses from families were positive, explaining that they felt that communication was great from the school district as well as from Dr. Carbone. There are areas that parents expressed that they would like to see more Zoom classrooms for students in the future, but outside of that overwhelmingly very positive response to Bristol's Board of Ed or Department of Education and Bristol's response to these COVID shutdowns. So it was a nice presentation. We also discussed the communication position and Dr. Carbone's efforts to fill that position. And at this time currently, it has been open multiple times with the salary range changing and increasing over time, still vacant, but actively pursuing the position.
Excellent. I'm sorry, excellent, thank you so much. Does anyone have any questions for Commissioner Pons? Okay, that concludes our committee reports for this evening. Policy Committee was scheduled to meet, but was postponed until this coming month. Next is my chair report, and I would like to briefly speak on the Memorial Boulevard Introgestic Art Magnet School. There was a beautiful presentation that was put on Thursday evening that encompassed a lot, ranging from the history of the building and how it first began, to our goals and our visions for not only the beautiful embodiment of the building, but also the curriculum and the setup for our classes. There is a short clip that we will show. I don't know if it's gonna move on its own. In the meantime, while we're waiting to see the rest of the slide, I will just say that the part that was the most interesting to me, oh, here we go. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if you'd like me to, I can provide a brief voiceover, if that would help.
Yes, I was just going to do the same, but I will allow you to do it, because your voice is much better than mine.
Very good. So with regard, with respect to the May 28th Community Forum, the event was well-attended. We had over 80 participants. We had remarks from Superintendent Carbone, as well as Mayor Zappo Sasso. The format of the program was very purposeful. We celebrated our past with a presentation of Voices of the Boulevard. These were interviews with Memorial Boulevard alum, which included Loretta Tevin, Edward Lawrenson, our very own Tommy O'Brien, and Ronnie Casido. The next segment was Planning for Our Future. This included a presentation of programming and enrollment constructs that was facilitated by Carly Fortin, the Director of Teaching and Learning. And the evening concluded with a brief legacy segment that included modeling and finishes that were presented by our architect Angela Cahill. So the presentation in its entirety is on the Board of Ed website, as well as the City of Bristol website, and if you have some time to spend, I think it's worthwhile to give you some historical context, as well as our very detailed plan for moving forward.
Thank you. The biggest thing of note to me comes from my passion for student achievement, and that was the discussion that Carly had regarding the courses being done by clusters, which is still very new and very innovative in place of the pathway formula that we were discussing. And that will be coming up on the next Student Achievement Meeting, but I was very happy to see that we are moving in a direction of courses that will be offered, and how those will be intertwined with pathways that our students can have for college and for jobs. So that was very exciting, something I've been eagerly waiting for, and like Dr. Dieter said, all of this can be found on the websites, and it's very interesting to see all the pictures of Tom O'Brien. So that alone is worth the price of admission. That concludes my chair report for this evening. I will now hand it over to Dr. Carbone for the superintendent report.
Dr. Dieter, I may have been speaking to you, and I was muted that whole time, so thank you for, I was like, "Mike, unmute yourself." This evening, I will be speaking on a few items. There are five of them in the entirety. Using the framework of our district priorities, I will discuss briefly options for summer school, as Mrs. Fortin will be speaking more deeply about that later on in the meeting. I will talk about some of our closing activities and transitions, our 2020/21 reopening, as it is as of right now, which is limited information, and then do a quick review of some of the results of our parent social-emotional learning survey and distance learning survey that Commissioner Pons referenced during her report. There are four different ways that we will be engaging our learners, our scholars, over the summer. One of the ways that our scholars can continue their studies from pre-K to grade 12 is through virtual learning booster sessions. Virtual learning booster sessions will be designed and self-directed. They will be available and posted on our district and school websites beginning on July 6th. They will also be utilized throughout the course of the school year to address any gaps that may have occurred during school closure. And the second way that we will be engaging with our scholars is through teacher-led virtual learning booster sessions for K through grade 8. These sessions for both K5 and through 6-8 will be through invitation. They are not mandatory, but they will be aligned to areas that we feel our scholars will need support throughout the summer to ensure that we address any of learning gaps that may have been created as a result of our school closure. Thirdly, our high schoolers will have an opportunity to engage using Ingenuity Platform and take any of the necessary courses that are required to ensure that they have the appropriate number of credits for the following school year. That will be available for students in grades 9 through 12. And lastly, our extended school year for students with disabilities and students who have individualized educational plans will be provided in a virtual platform. All of the following summer learning options are virtual. The first booster session is virtual one-way. Teacher-led credit recovery and extended school year opportunities will have both asynchronous and synchronous learning experiences built into the learning sessions. We have three goals. It is hard to believe that we have less than 10 days of our school year, what feels like way too short of a time to communicate and connect with all of our scholars and their families. Over the past 17 days, we have focused with our administrative team on create, on three goals: creating community through connection and communication, celebrating the growth and success of our scholars and our teachers, and making sure that we create closure for our scholars. All three of these goals speak to what we know and what we have learned throughout our work during the past three months, both getting feedback from families, as well as feedback from students around what they need to feel connected and successful as they transition to the next grade or developmental plane, or graduate. I want to speak briefly around the 2021 school year reopening guidance. As you know, there is both locally, regional reopening committees, as well as a state reopening committee. The regional reopening committees, of which CREG is the RESC that is representing our area, are making recommendations to the Governor's Reopening Committee. We have a local reopening sub-task force that is looking at the current options available for September of 2020, and we will communicate with families, with our staff, as those plans become more solid. Right now, there is not a lot of guidance around the direction that the state or local municipalities will be taking regarding reopening in September. There is guidance for summer school, and the summer school guidance is very structured and strict around class size, number of students to teacher ratio, transportation, and health and well-being checks. As a result of that guidance, we have made, I have made the decision that we will remain in a virtual learning format for the summer of 2020. Next, I'd like to share the results from a parent guardian survey that was conducted this May. 1,500 families responded. Of the 1,500 families responded, who responded, the highest number of responses came from Bristol Eastern High School, about 23% of respondents, and the lowest was back about 1% of the respondents of the school population. Questions on this survey were designed for us to gather information around student well-being. One of the questions, and I will go through a series of questions and just share the percentages, "Did the school closure appear to have emotional impact on your children?" Some negative impact, which is 54%, or significant impact, which is 14%. So roughly 69% of our students had or parents observed some sort of negative impact due to school closure. That is a significant percentage, given the fact that over 1,500 families responded, which will play into the way we shape our reopening plans come the fall. Another question, and a series of questions encompassed how we were communicating with families at the school level, whether it was through personal reach-out at the classroom level and/or the school level. Of the responses, roughly 53% of the families felt that the emotional check-ins on students was adequate. 21% felt that it was not adequate, and of the remaining 25%, it was just not enough. That statistic is significant in the fact that if we remain in a virtual learning environment, or if we must go into a virtual distance learning plan next year, it will mean that we need to build in safeguards that we are reaching out and connecting with our students more frequently. To that end, the second, the supporting question around how often did school staff check in with children ranged from one time a week to five times a week. Given the dark green, there was a redundancy in it, so there's a dark orange, dark green, red, and blue signify about 75%, 70% of the time, someone from the staff in a school was checking in on a student. Other questions involve a parent's willingness to participate in learning opportunities for parents around social-emotional learning. 30% said definitely. Where 46% families felt that they might, depending upon the topic. And the supporting part of that question was, what topics would you, are most interested in if we provided some sort of online learning? Themes for the online learning that parents felt that they would like to see the district provide were involved supporting how they could support students' emotional needs, training for online learning platforms for parents, for them to become familiar with the platforms that the students were using, or the learning designs that students were using, educational videos to support the content that was being delivered to students, support helping them manage both their family and their student and the learning environment within the home, and then lastly, increase in real-time Zoom-type of instruction. Secondarily, the Office of Teaching and Learning often had asked parents to provide feedback regarding our distance learning plan. Within that set of inquiries, we were, we asked, "How did parents feel that the district participation was?" About 80% felt that the communication going out to families was just right. 13% felt that there was too much communication, and the remaining felt that there should be more communication, or more communication. In reference to school communication, schoolwork rather, 58% of the families surveyed felt that there was just the right amount of schoolwork being presented in our distance learning format. 9% felt there was too little schoolwork, and 32% of the respondents felt that there was too much schoolwork or work being posted within the Google and/or Seesaw platform. Finally, one of the question regarding our feedback or communication to and from school, classroom, and families, we asked if parents were satisfied with the response that they were receiving from their child's school. And again, agree and strongly agree, over 65% of the families surveyed felt that that communication satisfied their concern, with 23% of the families responding in a neutral position. We wanted to hear both the good and the bad of distance learning, and some of the positive feedback that we received was that parents enjoyed being part of their child's learning experience, whether seeing what was being posted and participating because of the platform. A lot of acknowledgement and thanks towards teachers, whether it was through, because of their feedback, because of the innovation of their teaching, the way that they were creating engaging lessons. Some families felt that their child actually was, were doing better within the virtual learning environment, and many parents shared that their child was becoming more independent as a result of virtual learning. Lastly, we asked what we could improve, what were some of the negative components of the distance learning? And the theme there was around having consistency across grade bands, especially if the parent had more than one child in the school district, the struggle of trying to manage distance learning and their own workload at home and/or outside of the home, and the request for virtual lessons, Zoom lessons, synchronous learning, and/or music instruction and PE In reference to our communication and outreach to parents, we were very aware that this, in the spring, in late spring, we begin to transition our students from school to school, whether it's from 5th grades to middle grades, middle grades to high school, or welcoming in our newest, youngest scholars. I do want to show an example of what we will be communicating to parents, and an opportunity for our parents to, and our students, to virtually visit their new schools. This is an example from Chip and Sil Middle School in Stafford. I chose Stafford because it's an elementary school, and they're very similar in their design, and Chip and Sil Middle School for the sophistication of when a parent goes into, hold on one second, when a parent visits a 360 presentation. So, for example, our Chip and Sil principals and administrative team visit each of our elementary schools. When they visit each of the elementary schools, they share about the experiences about being in a middle school, and then soon thereafter in the spring, students come and visit the school, as well as their parents, that evening. Because we were not able to do that, we've created a virtual opportunity for families and students to engage in the school. This is a 360 virtual tool, core. There's two different ways to view this: self-directed and/or you could play it through. If you play it through, it runs on an automatic presentation format. I'm going to play a few of these through. If you see a white dot, it's an opportunity for the student and the parent to engage in that classroom or in that learning space, to find out something about the space. It might be a teacher presenting an area, or what some of the components within the curriculum or syllabus. I will give an example of the library, using this as the pop-out. Another video loads, and you introduce the library. So that is an example of a middle school virtual tour that will be launched for next week, and then similarly, there's a, the Stafford version. This allows families and students to get comfortable with the environment. They can revisit the virtual tour, because it will be posted on each of our school's websites. Lastly, I'd like to speak about reopening, as I shared, and graduation. A reopening, we will communicate throughout the summer, the direction that we're going to take with our reopening planning. I do want to communicate to the community that we will not communicate if we don't have direction, and until there is definitive decisions about what reopening will look like.
Hey, Mike!
I don't want to worry or put parents in a position of unease, so I will wait until more guidance. So I will wait until more guidance is out there. Hold on one second. People's mute. All right. And then lastly, in reference to graduation, let me make sure my mic is open. In reference to graduation, I'm aware that there may have been more guidance. We are on calls, Dr. Dieter and I are on calls weekly with both the governor as well as our local officials to ensure that we are in alignment and aware of any of the changes in guidance, whether it is through summer camps, summer learning opportunities, graduation, the amount of people that can, can or cannot be in a space together. There was a change of guidance that was communicated leave this afternoon in reference to the fact that up to one hundred and fifty people could participate in a graduation. That would include students, administration and parents. And we have three hundred seniors, Bristol Central roughly, and two hundred and sixty seniors at Bristol Eastern. So we would not fall within that boundary line of how many people we could graduate appropriately. We are, however, keeping all options open. We have two more ways that we want to celebrate our seniors. One is Senior Night on the Boulevard. Bristol Eastern will be, seniors will participate and their families on Senior Night on the Boulevard on June eighth. And on June ninth, Senior Night on the Boulevard will celebrate our seniors from Bristol Central. Similarly, both of the schools will have, have begun to hand out all of the graduation mementos and school robes that they will use for their virtual and in-person graduation. We have designed an opportunity for every, every one of our seniors to walk across a stage that aligns with our local health requirements so that each child's name will be recognized, student will receive a, their diploma. And then all of the individual recordings of each of the students graduating will be spliced together for a virtual graduation ceremony. So that is our current plan. If anything changes between now and when we execute that plan, we will ensure that we communicate with our, our, our families and our seniors. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Carbone. Would you be able to have the slides that you presented emailed to the full board so that they can look at them better and?
Certainly.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Next on our agenda is our consent agenda.
Through the chair, could I ask a question of Dr. Carbone?
Of course.
I just wanted to know that as you update us about the continuing guidance throughout the summer as it's delivered, and I know it's kind of changing all the time, I mean even tonight, what you just mentioned about the graduation. Would the board be able to get some information about the attendance statistics that will be, you know, collected and reviewed from the current distance learning plan? Just as additional information about how the plans will be formulated going forward, keeping in mind attendance during the existing current, uh, distance learning.
Just so that I'm, I understand what you're looking for as the way, the percentage of students who attended lessons or submitted, because we, we are taking attendance. So you're looking for like the attendance report?
Yeah, like participation. How was participation impacted during the distance learning versus, you know, traditionally what we see in the in-person classroom environment? Just some understanding, I, I noticed that some districts released that information and I don't recall hearing ours yet, you know, and I just thought I would ask about that.
Sure. Release that.
And just a clarification on the slide, the thirteen percent, I know there was some overlap in the greens. Was the thirteen percent none or was it five times?
Of contact?
Yes. There it is. Is that, so was that the five days or the none?
No, that would be none. That was none. Dark, the dark green, I don't know if you can see my cursor, the dark green is a slice of pie that over near the orange. So it goes thirteen orange, dark green. That lime green is none.
And lastly, just I know that you mentioned the, the governor's newest information about graduation that just happened right before this meeting. And obviously, I did see also about the hundred and fifty person limitation. But I also saw, and please correct me if I misunderstood the press release, but that it wasn't limited to only one event. So if you had districts that were greater than the hundred and fifty limit, that you could plan more than one in-person attendance to still meet the hundred and fifty. And am I correct that that still isn't a viable option until July?
Just to make sure that you, I'm understanding the question. You could have a hundred and fifty in the morning and a hundred and fifty in the, in the afternoon. And say, let's say it's seventy-five students in every, well, it would have to be like fifty students and two parents, that still wouldn't be too much. So let's write that. It would have to be forty students, two parents, not all the staff and administration. That can't add up to more than one fifty.
So we would never be able to complete something in one day, even if we consider that option under this current attendance amount limits?
No, no, we would probably follow the same methodology we're using now. We're going to, over a span of three days, being able to have all of our seniors be recognized, drive up, walk across, get a picture. We're using about two to three days as a metric.
Thank you.
Okay, so next on our agenda is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Commissioner Giantonio moves to approve the consent agenda.
Commissioner Carlson seconds.
Thank you. Any comments before we do a roll call vote?
Point of order?
Yes.
Instead of doing a roll call vote, what I've done in other Zoom meetings is everybody votes. And then if, when you have the nays, you have the nays. And so you can assume unless people are abstaining or the others are yeses.
Okay, Sue, are you comfortable with that? Or would you prefer a roll call? I'm fine with either.
I'm going, I'd like to do a roll call.
Okay.
Commissioner Carlson?
Commissioner Carlson votes yes.
Mr. Giantonio? Commissioner Giantonio votes yes.
Commissioner O'Brien?
Yes.
Commissioner Pons?
Yes.
Commissioner Skolinka?
Commissioner Skolinka had to leave the meeting for a, a work issue.
Okay. Commissioner Viber?
Okay, yes, sorry.
Commissioner, Commissioner Wodowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dubey?
Yes.
Eight. It passes with eight votes.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is public comment. Sue, did we receive any?
No.
Okay, we will move right on then to deliberated items, district leadership team reports.
I'm going to invite Mrs. Fortin.
Thank you, Dr. Carbone. So I have the first deliberated item, team mentors and cooperating teachers. Teachers trained to serve as team mentors and cooperating teachers provide assistance and support to student teachers and beginning teachers in the district. Team mentorship is required by the State Department of Education. Mentors must be assigned to newly certified teachers. Principals recruit teachers to apply to be a team mentor or a cooperating teacher. And then the applications are reviewed by the team coordinating committee. Teachers are approved by the team coordinating committee and are now recommended to the Board of Education to be considered as a team mentor slash cooperating teacher. Once approved by the Board of Education, these teachers can be assigned to newly certified teachers as a mentor. The teachers we'd like to recommend for approval tonight are Lindsay Ravor, who is a grade eight language arts teacher at Chippensoe Middle School, Miranda Case, who's a grade three teacher at Edwood, Christine Monaco, who is an art teacher at Bristol Central High School, and Allison Silva, who is a social studies teacher at Chippensoe Middle School.
Okay. I'm all set for entertaining a motion.
I move that we, Chris Wilson and I are move that we approve the four team mentors.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Commissioner Giantonio seconds.
Is there any discussion before we take a roll call vote? Okay, I'm ready when you are. Mrs. Everett?
Commissioner Carlson?
Yes.
Mr. Giantonio?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien?
Yes.
Commissioner Pons?
Yes.
Commissioner Viber?
Yes.
Commissioner Wodowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Chair Dubey?
Yes.
It passes with the vote of eight commissioners, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And next to discuss summer school options.
So I will be talking about items ten point two and ten point three as a team report from our Office of Teaching and Learning and the Office of Special Services. Begin with our summer school options. And so need to advance the slide. Thank you. As we head into the summer, I wanted to share all of the options that are, students will have in front of them as summer learning opportunities. Before I go into detail about summer learning, I want to assure all of the commissioners that in addition to these opportunities, we're planning for ways in which we'll address the needs that we're exacerbated by the remote learning that we are currently in right now. And we'll do that when we return to school by adjusting pacing, curriculum pacing and other, looking at other instructional supports that we can provide for students. For the summer, we have a number of options that Dr. Carbone has already briefly mentioned, and I can go into a little bit more detail here. First, we're calling a virtual learning booster that is self-directed. All students are going to have the option of engaging in these summer learning opportunities. Right now, the Office of Teaching and Learning is identifying activities that students can choose to do that would boost their understanding of the content and skills in a self-directed platform. This is the most flexible option for students. It's similar to the summer reading or math activities that we may have done in the past. But this will be more tailored specifically to the curricular demands of both what students have experienced during remote learning and what's going to anticipate needing for next year. Moving away from the self-directed options, we have virtual, everything will be virtual. So we have some virtual learning options that will be teacher-directed. The first at the elementary level, so a little bit more about teacher-directed virtual learning at the elementary level. We'll have two teachers from each grade, grades K through five, who will target two to three major literacy and math concepts for the year. And we'll provide a blended approach of instruction, including virtual synchronous instruction face-to-face using a platform like Zoom or Google Meet, in addition to using asynchronous instruction through CSO or Google Classroom. Students are going to have daily synchronous instruction and asynchronous instruction for four days a week, running for five weeks, beginning the week of July fourteenth. We'll be able to identify up to forty students per grade level across the district. Moving on to the middle level, it's going to follow similarly to the elementary design in that there will be teacher-directed virtual instruction in English Language Arts and Math. And these English Language Arts and Math teachers in grade six, seven and eight will provide a blended approach of instruction, including again, that synchronous instruction, video to audio, in addition to asynchronous learning opportunities. And just like at the elementary level, they will be meeting four days each week, running for five weeks. And again, we're hoping to identify up to forty students per grade level. For high school, the environment changes a little bit in that we are looking for credit recovery options. Credit recovery for our high school students will be using Edge Annuity and live instruction to help students meet their goal of attaining the credit that was left as incomplete. Students will meet their teachers daily for synchronous and asynchronous instruction, Monday through Thursday, totaling up to one hour of synchronous instruction and the balance of the work done asynchronously. Extended school year for our students will again be offered in a virtual manner. Again, following the pattern that we were just, we're just discussing for elementary and middle school. It will provide a blend of remote learning that is synchronous and asynchronous as it was decided upon and their students' individualized educational program. Students will be provided with remote learning aligned to the goals that they have within their IEP to the greatest extent possible. Special education teachers and related service providers will provide both synchronous and asynchronous instruction. And right now, we have about two hundred students who have a recommendation for participation in extended school year. And our team will be reviewing those requirements for our extended school year students for both in, in district and out of district placement. And that's it.
Thank you, Carly. Are there any questions before we move on?
Through the chair, Commissioner Giantonio has a question.
Okay.
Were the summer school plans that were just been outlined right now reviewed in any of the committees prior to this meeting?
Yes, we reviewed them at Student Achievement Committee.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, we will now discuss curriculum revision.
Good evening, commissioners. It's, it's Dr. Eckenberg. On May twentieth, several curricular were brought to the Student Achievement Committee for review. The first course is Botany. Botany is a new half-credit elective course to be offered to students in grades ten through twelve. The course provides students the opportunity to research and study plants in their classroom, biology lab and greenhouse. The Student Achievement Committee recommended the course for broad, for board approval. Before the motion, does the board have any questions related to this new course? Thank you. Then I would ask for the board to make a motion to approve Botany as a new course offering for Bristol Schools.
Commissioner Carlson moves to approve the inclusion of Botany on the school curriculum.
All right, the motion has been made and seconded. Any comments before we do a roll call vote?
Chair Dubey, I didn't hear who seconded.
Commissioner Pons?
Okay.
And we're all set for a roll call vote?
Commissioner Carlson?
Yes.
Commissioner Giantonio? All right, yes, for Botany, correct?
Yes.
Yes. Commissioner O'Brien?
Yes.
Commissioner Pons?
Yes.
Commissioner Viver?
Yes.
Commissioner Wodowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Chair Dubey?
Yes.
Motion passed with eight commissioners in favor of it.
Thank you.
Okay. The second course Student Achievement Committee reviewed on the 20th was Environmental Issues and Sustainability. This is a revised full-year course, an elective offered to grades 11 and 12 students. It is an interdisciplinary course that embraces topics from geology, biology, environmental studies, environmental science, chemistry, and geography, excuse me. Students use inquiry and investigation to construct an applied knowledge of the characteristics of an environmental sustainability. I would now ask the board to make a motion to approve this revised version of Environmental Issues and Sustainability. Does Commissioner Viver still moved?
Second.
I second.
I heard two. Who seconded the motion?
Commissioner Pons.
Okay. Ready for a roll call vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Carlson?
Yes.
Commissioner Giantonio?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien?
Yes.
Commissioner Pons?
Yes.
Commissioner Viver?
Yes, I really like this one.
Commissioner Wodowski?
Yes.
Chair, Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Chair Dubey?
Yes.
Motion passed. Eight commissioners in favor.
Okay, thank you. Next will be the general music curriculum.
Good evening, Commissioners. The Student Achievement Committee reviewed the general music curriculum for grades one through five on May 20th. This revision was first initiated due to the revision of the National Music Standards in 2014. Our teachers have created the curriculum to reflect national standards, and I think them into creating and revising this curriculum to meet the needs of our Bristol students. The Student Achievement Committee recommended the course for board approval. Before the motion, does the board have any questions related to the curriculum? Okay. So I would now ask the board to make a motion to approve the revised version of general music for grades one through five.
Still moved, Viver?
Commissioner Carlson seconds.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded.
Okay. Commissioner Carlson?
Yes.
Commissioner Giantonio?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien?
Yes.
Commissioner Pons?
Yes.
Commissioner Viver?
Yes.
Commissioner Wodowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Chair Dubey?
Yes.
Motion passed. Eight commissioners in favor.
The final course that Student Achievement Committee reviewed on May 20th was Algebra I. This revised course is a core requirement for students. This revised curriculum was influenced by the illustrative mathematics program and is problem-based. The goal of the curricular design is to spark discussion, perseverance, and the enjoyment of mathematics for the development of intentional lesson design that promotes mathematical growth. The Student Achievement Committee recommended the course for board approval. I would now ask for the board to make a motion to approve this revised Algebra I curriculum. Viver still moved?
Second.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. We are ready for a roll call vote if there are no further questions.
Just to be clear, that was Commissioner O'Brien that seconded?
It was.
Thank you. Commissioner Carlson?
Yes.
Commissioner Giantonio?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien?
Yes.
Commissioner Pons?
Yes.
Mr. Viver?
Yes.
Commissioner Wodowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Chair Dubey?
Yes.
Motion passed. Eight commissioners in favor.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm just going to ask one moment before we move on. I'm just looking into one thing.
Hi. Who, hi. For a point of clarification in reference to the summer school learning options, we have always offered a summer school, the high school credit recovery. Carly, do you need a vote, or is that an informational item?
That was an informational item.
The one change is just that it went virtual, but we've always offered schooling through the summer for our students.
Okay, and then we, do we need to vote on 10.3 as well? Or was that informational as well?
Reminder, please mute your extended school year. Also, something that we always offer. It was an update because of the nature of what the changes for this year.
Okay.
Being
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. Okay, so we will move on.
Yep, the one second.
Thanks.
There you go.
Thank you. So building reports. Up first is MBIAMS.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Previously, I described the community forum at the beginning of the meeting. So I'll move on to the building committee report. I've summarized that meeting as well as the special meetings that occurred earlier in the month. It was a busy month for us due to the scheduling and arrival of contracts and the need to turn those around through the committee. So with respect to project managers' report, demolition phase-one contracts have been executed per the revised guidance from Oscar and our corp counsel. If you've been by the property recently, you will recognize that fencing and temporary power have been erected and gone in. We've had the delivery of our portable offices and other preparation and site work for demolition has commenced. Our architect has indicated that all final drawings for estimation have been, and planning have been submitted. We had a fits and finishes update with new preferences based on community and committee feedback specific to some of the tones that had been selected. It may have been a little bit not as palatable as, as the community and the committee would prefer and didn't quite fit the period of the art deco movement. Our construction manager updated us similar to the project manager reporting on specific events at the site with some of the staging and other contractors that are rolling in. My chair report really was brief, but I did want to recognize the project work that's been completed by Tara Landon as she has pivoted through the many demands of the changes that have occurred this past month with the, the virtual formats. Tim Callahan provided us with an expenditure report, expenses, expenses on the project thus far as reported are just under the $2 million threshold. He continues to make submission for state reimbursement, and that reimbursement continues on a fairly regular cycle. Our next meeting, our next regularly scheduled meeting will be June 25th. I am starting to see activity on the designated email, so just, you know, an opportunity to shout out that any questions or concerns that the community may have about the project can be directed to MBIAMS@bristolk12.org. And you can also follow the progress on Twitter at Building MBIAMS. And as stated earlier, all the presentations can be found on the Board of Ed and Bristol All Heart websites. If you just search the Memorial Boulevard Introjistic Arts Magnet School Building Committee, that'll bring you to the appropriate tabs. That concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you. If there are no further questions, we can move on to the Stafford School roof project.
Good evening, Commissioners and Dr. Carbone. Thank you, Chris Wilson, on your presentation. I think you caught a lot of the stuff that I'm going to be talking about tonight. But I also would like to thank Tara Landon for her great work and what's been happening and how we've been keeping things together when we had to do a lot of online stuff, and we've been keeping these projects moving smoothly. But we are currently, we're taking advantage of the, the empty schools. And we're, we're moving forward with construction, some of them early. And we've realized we're getting some good pricing, so everything seems to be on, on target in terms of numbers and in terms of a timeframe. So Stafford, we just got approval to go out to bid next week. Bids will come in, so we'll see him soon. South Side Construction in Hazmet is starting very soon. We're having a meeting tomorrow with Dave to talk about the logistics. Northeast Silling and Floor are on, are moving forward, and we're working with them. We started those both early, and we hope to get those done, done in late July. So both, all the projects are on budget and on schedule right now. Any questions?
Okay. Thank you so much, Tim. If no one has any further questions, we can move on to the South Side HVAC project.
I think I presented on that.
Oh, you did. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. It's okay. I'll review it again.
No, that's okay.
Okay, it's, it's on there. It's on there. Sorry.
That's okay.
I can present anything you want.
No, that's okay. I'm sorry.
Okay.
I got sidetracked by a panicking dog. Okay.
I just had a dog barking in the background, too.
Something with thunder and lightning gets her.
Yes, we're having the same thing here in Avon.
Ah, telling you. Okay, so then next on our agenda will be new business. No, Northeast Middle School. I apologize.
That was covered as well.
Okay, then we are moving on to new business. Is there any new business before the board, other than the fact that my dog is distracting me? No. Are there any liaison or information reports that any of the commissioners would like to share at this time?
Yes, I'd like to share one thing. I had the opportunity to go through one of the schools a couple of weeks ago with the custodial staff, and I just want to say that they've been doing an excellent job of cleaning the place up. They're doing a deep cleaning of the schools, and I'm sure it's going to be ready when we're ready to get that school back, the schools back in business.
Thank you, Commissioner Carlson. I appreciate that. Any other commissioners care to speak? On behalf of a school or any information they would like to share?
Commissioner Wilson will report on the regional advisory team that I'm a member of.
Thank you.
I'm a member of the correct regional advisory team. There are six regional advisory teams across, represent all the RESCs. It's known as the RESC Alliance. And we meet each week to discuss the reopening of schools. The meeting, the group originally thought they were going to be a planning group that was going to plan and advise the governor and the SDE about how to open schools. But it clearly has turned out to be the SDE and the governor provides us with information, and we respond and react to that information. The part of what the superintendent talked about tonight, which was the summer school and the summer camps and the ESY plans are part of the information that we responded to. The next thing that we responded to was the SDE presented us with several proposals as to what school reopening in the fall, summer, fall might look like. One was an ABD, A-B day, A one day, B another day. One was half-day schedule. And the committee did not reach an agreement on them at all. So the committee came up with some other alternatives. I don't know any alternatives that have been accepted yet, but it seems that the governor is starting to put some pressure and the SDE is putting some pressure for us to go back to school. And so one of the proposals that seems to have some interest of the committee, and the committee is very diverse, and it's very difficult to develop any consensus because you have small districts, large districts, urban districts, non-urban districts, and those, Connecticut is a place of steady habits. And so it's very difficult to reach any kind of true consensus. But what I hear coming out of the committee is some kind of plan where K to five will go Monday through Thursday through what we call traditional school and use all the buildings, facilities in the district. And then on Fridays, they'll do distance learning. And then the seven through 12 will come in on Friday and do, you know, traditional school. And now I don't know that this plan will go forward. Everything seems to change on a week-to-week basis. Not only does our group meet and give guidance to the SDE and the governor, but there's four other groups that are also doing that at the same time. The CAPS is, the superintendent organization is doing that, and there are two other organizations as well that are providing information to the governor. I will say that a lot of discussion is around busing. And it is extremely difficult under the current construct that is provided by CDC and the Health Department that busing is not going to be impacted in a huge way. What they're recommending now is that no students sit beside each other, no students sit across from each other, so they can only sit on a diagonal basis on a bus. So instead of having, I don't even save, sake of argument, 60 people on a bus, you might have 20 people on a bus. So what kind of cost implement, implications will that have for a school district like Bristol that buses probably close to 7,000 students? And in Hartford and other school districts, it would be even greater impact. So that, that is one of the big things. And then how will we provide PPE? Are you, you know, collaborating with your municipality to get that? Who's going to pay for the cost of it? You know, who's going to have masks? Who's not going to have masks? As well, the cleaning of the schools. There's been a lot of discussion about the schools are going to have to be cleaned at least twice a day. And if anybody is sick, they're going to use one bathroom, and if everybody's not sick, they'll use another bathroom. If we model it after the summer school plan, it looks like it'll be very difficult. So I think we're all hopeful that the summer school plans would just be temporary and that we could develop into something more robust in terms of how we can do traditional school again. I will say that there's not a lot of consensus on going back. Some people are fearful of going back. Some people say we have to go back, so the opinions vary all over the lot. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson.
I just wanted, you know, to, to your point, I thank you for going over that deeply. You know, the unfunded mandate of putting a monitor on the bus. There are some things in those reports that are cost prohibitive.
Yes, yeah. I didn't go into all the detail just because I know we've all been sitting for a long time at this meeting. But I have been engaging not only with the superintendent, but I also engage with, and debrief with Cave every week because there's representatives at Cave that are also on some of the other committees. We've been meeting with Fran Rubinowitz. So we're trying to engage with as many people as possible. So we're trying to engage with as many people as possible and try to get as good an outcome. But it real, our committee really has become one of an advisory committee now. There's the Boston Consulting Group was in the governor's ear for a while. I don't know if they're still there, and there's other people in the governor's ear as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. Do any other commissioners wish to offer a liaison report or information at this time? Okay, hearing none, I'd like to make a motion, I'd like to accept a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
And second?
Viver, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, we won't take a roll call vote for that one. I agree, we can adjourn this meeting at 9:11 in the evening. Thank you very much, everyone. Enjoy the rest of your night.